All this meeting to order. Today, we will be interviewing candidates to fill the council vacant seat position number two. The candidate's order of appearance has been predetermined by lottery. Each council member will ask one question, and the candidate will have up to five minutes to respond to each question. Each candidate will respond to the same set of questions from council, and the order of questioning will be the same as of the roll call for the month. Mr. Jason?
Yeah, and I just wanted to explain that roll call switches each month. One month it goes to the council president's left, so to Ms. Perez's left, and then the next month, his or her right for the month of February goes to the right. So Ms. Van will be second, and we'll follow that order for the questioning. We do this to provide balance, so that each council member has an equal amount of time to speak each month in each meeting. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jason. So, we have our first candidate here. He is James Albertson. Thank you for applying for this position, and I will begin with the first question.
Absolutely.
Why do you want to be a council member?
That's a great question, actually, for a number of reasons. The original reason that kind of got my interest was in looking at the homeless issue, homelessness issue in Seattle and seeing kind of how it was possibly coming way toward Renton. This initially got my interest is to kind of want to be involved in maybe having some sort of influence in, quite frankly, not having a Renton end up in the situation that Seattle is in. So that's initially what caused my interest to even look and say, hey, you know what, you can be a part of the solution, you can be a part of the problem, you can complain, or you can actually seek to be involved to try to come up with some really good solutions too, that are both humane, but at the same time structured. And in my mind, I wanted to really see or have Renton be an example, if you will, of how to successfully handle and get ahead of the issue and really set an example for the region. So that's what initially got my interest. And as I delved into my campaign and talking with the constituents out and about in the community, certainly some of the other issues came about as far as transportation, understanding some of the concerns of the citizens. Economic development and the growth of Renton quickly went to the top of the list as it relates to the fact that, you know, people are actually recognizing the potential that Renton has. And you can have good growth, or you can have bad growth. And, you know, how you manage that growth and some of the decisions, quite frankly, that the city council makes in managing that growth can make a big difference. How do we kind of aggressively look at maybe economic development to bring in and develop in the right way versus just kind of watch and make it happen and really kind of take charge of how Renton grows? Because I think it's inevitable. And how do we do it so that it's sustainable and really kind of includes as many as possible in the vision of the future? So that was the other aspect that really went to the forefront. And I've just always been, my father used to say, if it is to be, it is up to me. And I felt as though I would have a good voice on the council to make some or contribute to some strategic decisions, maybe tough decisions, and really have a voice in shaping the future. And in my experience with the Chamber of Commerce as the board chair and just in running my own business for 10 years, you know, I know I think strategically enough to really come in and hit the ground running. I believe once, of course, you finish drinking from the fire hose and learning everything, I felt as though my voice could be one that counted.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Councilmember Van?
Thank you for being here today, Mr. Albertson. My question to you is, how would you define inclusion and equity? And how would you specifically address inequities in our city?
So that's a great question. How would I define inclusion and equity? Probably would maybe parse out both definitions. I mean, inclusion, I think, is the feeling that I'm welcome, no matter what part of society or what part of the city, what part of what ethnicity, whatever it is, in the bigger picture. And if I choose to, and I have avenues that are where I feel comfortable in taking and participating and really being involved, that's how what inclusion means to me. Equity is that, you know, whether it be in, I'm treated, basically, I'm treated fairly. I don't necessarily see any sort of preferences given in law enforcement or in housing decisions or whatever it is. So that's how I would define it. Now, I'm sorry, can you repeat the second part of the question?
And how would you specifically address inequities in our city?
Well, I think the beginning part of it is to understand exactly what inequities are perceived as being out there. I mean, you can look at it from the outside, but I think the best thing to do is to talk to the citizens and actually find out from those, hey, how do you feel excluded, if that is the case? I think saying it exists and knowing exactly what form it takes are two different things. And so to address it properly, you have to find out exactly where is it manifesting itself and then taking the right action. I know the mayor's task force on inclusion and that sort of thing has made some good inroads, and I think I would be full force behind looking and looking into what's been done, adding to the ideas. A lot of it comes down to, once you find out, how are you making opportunities available? It may be socially, it may be from the standpoint of opportunities for employment, it may be kind of how you see or how one sees the opportunities that they have, whether they be real or perceived. And so I think it needs to actually be a structured program, if you will, to increase the kind of workforce development possibly, as far as inequities that people might see and that sort of thing, as far as their opportunities. You know, what type of businesses are we bringing into the city that make all feel as though, hey, my needs are being recognized and there's not a slant toward this way or that way? I think it needs to be a proactive, a proactive stance on creating that environment of equity. I think there also needs to be, from the standpoint of law enforcement, the more, for those who feel there's inequity in law enforcement, how are we increasing the relationships that the Renton Police Department have with neighborhoods? I was speaking with the police guild not long ago, and one of the things that they thought would be helpful would have more personnel, so they could actually have more targeted patrols in neighborhoods, both from a safety standpoint, but in, from the standpoint of getting to know the individuals, the incentive or the initiatives like Coffee with a Cop and things like that. The more we have exposure to those things that we may have misconceptions about, the more we now understand, hold on a second, maybe I didn't think, and maybe I thought wrong, or maybe I thought something that wasn't the case. I know back when I went to, and in college, you know, I went to Purdue in West Lafayette, and there were, from the standpoint, there were people from Indiana who, quite frankly, had never seen a minority growing up until they got to Purdue and hung out. And there were people from Gary, Indiana, who had only seen the majority on TV, believe it or not. And a certain thing happened during those four years where you see people available to interact with each other. And these thoughts that they had, whether, and you can tie it into inclusion and equity, they realized, you know, we're not that much different. And I think that is the key where you want to search for, what kind of events, what kind of atmosphere are you creating so that you have as much interaction as possible? And those realizations can happen. So ultimately, I guess that's how I would answer that.
Thank you. Jason, are we have the timer?
I did.
Yeah.
And I was watching, too.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Ojala.
Hi, thank you for being here.
Hi.
In your opinion, what roles, if any, do cities have regarding climate change?
You know what? Well, they certainly have a role. Because, you know, when you look at the data, I mean, it, they're, depending on the city, some of the emissions, some of, you know, obviously ones that have more factories and things such as that. But also, when you look at emissions from traffic, you know, the more congestion you have and standstill traffic, well, the more concentration of emissions and that sort of thing. So whereas a city in and of itself, maybe if you're Los Angeles or New York, maybe people see that right off the bat. But every individual city has, I think, a responsibility to go green as much as possible, to explore, and everything's not necessarily possible, but to explore the options that of renewable energy of whether it be solar or things such as that. Some things, once again, are within the control, within the budget, some are not. But I think one of the greatest things that cities can do is really look at, how do I effectively get cars off the road, get traffic off the road? You're not going to eliminate that. But that can tie into quite a few things, you know, transit-oriented development. How many people can leave their cars at home and take advantage of mass transit in that manner? Quite frankly, how many people actually live where they work? You know, there's a stat I believe in, 71% of people in Seattle actually live and work in Seattle. In King County, only 41% live and work in the same place. And nationally, only 42% of people live and work in the same place. And so now it ties to what kind of economic development do you have? What kind of job opportunities do you have where people who live in your city actually can work in your city, whether it means bringing more tech jobs, if that's the case, I mean, good-paying jobs and that sort of thing, so that they don't have to actually travel to, in this case, Seattle or Bellevue or Redmond? Now, there's one part, but then also affordable housing, maybe workforce housing, so that people don't have to live outside of your city because they can't afford it and then come and work in your city. Let's say teachers, for instance, you know, how about teachers actually being able to live where they actually work? So therefore, once again, we're eliminating the amount of traffic. So from the standpoint of cities, I know there are initiatives to hit some of those larger emissions, and, you know, like I say, solar and that sort of thing. But I think when you get down to it, you know, if you can actually get the cars off the road, if you can reduce traffic, if you can reduce standstill congestion, then that, I think, is mostly in the control of cities, and it really has to do with those indirect ways to do so, in my opinion.
Thank you. Councilmember McCarver.
Thank you. My question is, as Renton grows economically, it grows more out of reach for many working-class families. How would you work to keep Renton affordable and a place for everyone?
So, another great question. And I think, I think it has to be proactively, I mean, it has to be on purpose, where you look and say, when you talk about affordable housing, first off, what does that mean? How many, what's the number, if you will, of homes, what percentage need to be affordable? And then, you know, utilizing the resources. I mean, for instance, I know the SHB 1406, House Bill 1406, that has tied to it the potential of extra funds, if you will, I mean, excess funds, if certain, maybe the levy can be passed, or I know there's additional tax, sales tax that might not fly. But overall, that kind of tied to, well, if you can, what's the qualifying event? If you can actually get that passed and target it, now, how do you get the public to say, okay, yes, I'll pay the equivalent of maybe $7 a month more in property taxes? But if you say, hey, this is going to increase our workforce housing, we're going to increase workforce housing, affordable housing, then you give incentive, you tie the cause, if you will, to the effect or whatever it is. So I think you need to be aggressive with how you serve that up to the public. I think, once again, affordable housing has to be tied to maybe increasing, maybe increasing, you know, population density, looking at ADUs, for example, and how they, I believe council extended the relative ease of getting additional dwelling units built on a property. So maybe, you know, kids can live with their parents who can't afford to live on their own or whatever it is. So how do you increase the density in an affordable manner? I don't think, some people will say, well, some form of rent control or whatever it is, I don't think that's it. But how have, how can you incentivize developers, if you will, from a standpoint of zoning, to make sure that they're willing to create and build those sort of, that sort of housing and things such as that? You have the market forces that are still at work, but at the same time, you have to figure out where are the places that you can do it. The other thing is you can possibly do, if you build the businesses, build the tax base, you know, and Renton bringing in strong businesses to build the tax base, then, you know, hopefully that will make things more affordable. And I know that's from the property tax standpoint, but every little bit counts when it comes to that sort of thing. So, you know, there's a lot of different, I think, facets to it, but I think you have to, first off, get a target, get a target of what you want, how much you need, and then, I lost my train of thought, and then figure out, well, what's the best way to go about it? Workforce housing, maybe it's senior housing, maybe it's veteran housing, things like that. But you have to, free market reign probably needs to be reeled in a little bit, if you will. I may have had some other notes, but let's go with that.
Thank you. Councilmember Prince?
Thank you, Madam President. James, it's good to see you. If you were running for election to this seat right now, what would you tell the voters if you were on their doorstep, that the most important issue for you to work on as a council member is and why?
Well, actually, I had experience with this. I think the most important, what I would tell a voter from the conversations I had would be to really successfully address the homelessness issue, because it feeds into a few other areas. I mean, safety, safety is a concern for a lot of the citizens. And by successfully addressing the homelessness issue, it really feeds to a lot of the concerns that people had, whether it be their kids playing in the park and running across hybridermic needles and things like that, whether it be maybe tapping into the increase in nighttime prowling type incidents. Not that that's necessarily the homeless, but it's not a far stretch to figure that that may be a bit of a contributor. And so I think if we do that and successfully put a plan in place, then the people can feel better about the growth that's going to happen, because that's a part of managing growth, too. As you get bigger, are you going to create more opportunities where people are now going to kind of add to that, to that issue? Or are you, if you have that in place, are you going to alleviate some concerns? And once again, this is about the concerns of the person on whose doorstep that I'm standing, because I think a lot of people worry that, man, this is out of control. And, well, now we're going to have more people, it's going to get more expensive, there's going to be more people on the street. And so overall, when you back up and say, we have this, we have this Plan A to get people back to sustainability, which is tying into how we're going to help manage growth as well. Now, granted, there's always the economic development and things like that. But from my standpoint, that's the main thing I heard people caring about. Sure, they know Renton's growing, everybody's going to complain about traffic, but overall, that's where I got the most emotional feedback and concern, and not necessarily in an angry way, but also concerned about what are we doing to help those that, you know, have kind of fallen out of the, there wasn't a safety net, you know, have fallen through the cracks. How do we get them back? So I think overall, it helps on both, from both sides. You know, they're, they can see personally how that can help them and also help the fellow citizen. That would be my main thing.
Thank you.
Councilmember Corman?
Yeah, hi.
Hi, Randy.
So this is a little bit of a follow-up, in a way. So housing is obviously of great concern across the region. How would you provide increasing housing options while balancing this work with preservation of existing neighborhoods?
Wow, yes, that is a good question. I think a lot of that comes down to, I think, I mentioned before, maybe density. You have to address density in some, in some way, because, you know, we do have more issues that maybe Chicago or New York or LA, they don't have with the green spaces and things such as that. So I think we need to really look at, I mentioned maybe ADUs, how do we increase inventory without the sprawl, if you will? We only have so much room as it is. Transit-oriented development, that certainly is going to be key in utilizing what we have, maybe kind of redeveloping the brown space areas and then developing maybe some of the green space areas. Overall, that's how I would see it. But I think some of it comes down to, I think a look needs, a relook needs to be done in zoning, at some of the current zoning laws, the permitting process. That's the other thing, quite frankly, Councilmember Prince, on occasion, I heard in conversations, were difficulties with the permitting process and why it took so long, you have discouraged some builders from doing maybe some of the things that we need done. So I think overall, you have to take a step back and look at, look at the zoning and where that may be shooting us in the foot to responsibly develop without infringing on some of the areas that we're concerned about.
Thank you very much. Thank you for being here. This is it, and we will be making a decision probably today around seven.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, James. I have seven minutes. Any extra question? I'm joking. Thanks a lot.
Thanks. I believe Julia will be bringing in the next.
We are waiting for the next candidate, for everybody that is watching. Linda Smith is our next candidate. And each council member will ask one question, and you have five minutes, up to five minutes to respond to each question. Thank you for applying for this position, and I will be asking the first question.
Okay, thank you.
Why do you want to be a council member?
Okay, thank you for the interview this afternoon. I want to be a council member to continue to be a part of advancing the work here in the city of Renton. I believe Renton has positioned itself to be one of the best cities in the nation as we've laid out a plan that enables every individual to be a part of the committee. So I believe that my skills, my background, and the work that I've done is in direct alignment to the city council position number two.
Thank you. Councilmember Van?
Ms. Smith, how would you define inclusion and equity? And how would you specifically address issues of inequities in our city?
How would I fund?
How would you define inclusion and equity?
Okay. So I would define inclusion and equity as every resident and citizen within our community to have an opportunity to benefit from the programs and the services within the city and to be able to have access to resources that enables them to be able to live a life that emulates wholeness of life. So I would define equity as just having access to the resources that are available to each person based on their needs.
Thank you. Councilmember Ojala.
Hello, Dr. Smith. In your opinion, what roles, if any, do cities have regarding climate change?
Well, I believe cities have a responsibility to be aware of the issues that impact climate change, and I think they have an important role in terms of champion issues and to bring about solutions to the residents and the community of the city and work on viable solutions in terms of creating a climax that is suitable and adaptable to a good living environment.
Thank you. Councilmember McCarver.
Yes. As Renton grows economically, it grows more and more out of reach for many working-class families. How would you work to keep Renton as an affordable place for everyone?
Well, that's a really good, that's a really important question. I think one of the important things of keeping Renton a livable place is to have jobs available, to keep rent control, to have housing, livable wages, and have affordable housing for individuals and families within our community.
Thank you. Councilmember Prince?
Thank you, Madam President. Good afternoon, Reverend Dr. Smith.
Thank you.
If you were running for election to this seat right now, what would you tell the voters when you were outdoor bailing is the most important issue for you to work on and why?
Well, I think the issues that's important that I would tell them would be affordable housing, managing homelessness, public safety, and diversity and inclusion. Those are the three areas that I believe are most important at this point in time.
Thank you. Councilmember Corman?
Yes, good afternoon. So housing is obviously of great concern across the region. How would you provide increasing housing options while balancing this work with preservation of existing neighborhoods?
How would I, okay, could you mind repeating the question again?
Sure, no problem at all. Yeah, so housing is obviously of great concern across the region. How would you provide increasing housing options, that is, more housing, while balancing this work with preservation of existing neighborhoods?
Well, I think one of the important things is building more affordable housing, creating opportunities for ownership, probably have to really think about that. But those are the two things that I think about, is creating opportunities for more housing, having access to, yeah, that's the only thing that I can think of at this point.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Dr. Linda Smith. We will be making a decision tonight at seven o'clock.
Okay, great.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Goodbye. Okay. The next candidate is Jane Davis Hayes. Am I, is that correct, Ms. Pramos?
Yes.
Okay. Sorry. No worries, Julia. Thank you.
Hi. Good evening. Thank you for being here. Thank you for applying. So each councilmember will ask a question, and you have up to five minutes to respond to each question. I will be asking the first question, and it is, why do you want to be a councilmember?
Wonderful. First, thank you very much for having me here and being one of the six interviewees. It's a real honor to be selected among the candidates, and I realize how challenging this is for you. So thank you for taking the time and to be, do this thoughtful process. So I, as you may have seen in my packet, I have worked in, in local government and nonprofits for my career. I started off thinking I was going to be, work in finance and started out my career in that way and realized that I was more interested in doing community building and along the public service route. So throughout my career, I have been involved in various aspects of public service, working in local governments, working for the state, for the community college system. And it provided me a lot of insight into what goes into the challenges of complex issues that the council faces. I have always thought about running for office, and one of the things that I really, that brought me forward to, to, I'm sorry, to deciding to apply for this position was my, of course, my love for the community and love for Renton, seeing how, I've worked here for eight years, but I'm looking at becoming more involved in Renton at a higher level, not looking to come back to work for Renton as far as a job and being involved in the day-to-day aspects. I'm looking to be, be able to get in the trenches with the council to talk about the tough issues that people, we are facing, looking at policies, looking at setting budget priorities, and really trying to support the city workforce to, to meet the vision that's been set forward by our mayor and our business plan that we see up here. When I considered looking, applying for this position, I reached out to probably, probably about 20 or so people, asking them what they thought about what's happening to the city and what things that they are concerned about. And I was, learned a lot about what concerns they have, which are very similar for other communities in this region, so including affordable, these things you know, affordable housing, transportation and growth concerns, but also quality-of-life things, wanting to see more park services, wanting to see more events happening. And all of those things I knew that I have experience in, working day-to-day, so I know that I could come forward and ask the critical questions and be able to contribute right away about this, about, with this position.
Thank you. Councilmember Ban.
Ms. Davis Hayes, how would you define inclusion and equity? And how would you specifically address these issues of inequities in our city?
Okay, great. That's a great question. So how I would define inclusion and equity? So inclusion not is, I almost said all-inclusive, inclusion includes beyond race and ethnicity inclusion. I believe it's a, inclusion includes people who have not been involved in the process. So throughout my career, I have been, my goal has been to get voices that are not heard and not considered in the process, be part of that process. So, and that may not mean coming to this, this chamber right here and coming to City Hall for a meeting. There's definitely other ways to do that. Equity itself is, I think that, and probably all of you have seen this, this little image where you have the equity versus equality, where the three boys are looking over the fence into the, to the baseball field, where if you give everybody one box, only two of them can actually see over the fence. And so, again, it's about really giving people the tools to come to the table and be able to contribute at the same level. So that doesn't mean providing everybody the same. These topics are definitely very important, not only in my professional life, but in my personal life. When I worked for the city of Seattle, and this was back in 2000 to 2005, so before their Race and Social Justice Initiative, I went through training on my own initiative through some of the projects of up front of the city to learn more about race and social justice. And throughout my professional career, have made an effort to make sure that, again, people have been, are more involved. And now currently, when I work at the city of Issaquah, I have, I'm just ending up our nine-month cohort for the Government Alliance for Racial Equity, GARE program, a lot of cities go, city governments, local governments go through. And I'm on a citywide internal committee to try to implement some of those things in the city. Again, what I've chosen to do outside of my normal work life. Personally, I, when I, when we purchased our first house in the South Park neighborhood in Seattle, and that is a pretty diverse community, and I led the Neighborhood Association after a few years living there. And I was looking around the neighborhood, we were 27% of the time Latinx members, and that did not, was not reflective in that. So I, along with some other people in our committee, decided to go out and have conversations in their homes, in places that made them feel comfortable. And of course, learned that they had the same issues that everybody that was coming to the meeting about. And so we found ways to, one, to make them feel comfortable being part of our, our community conversations, but two, meaning that they didn't have to come to a meeting where there would be a police officer there talking about crime prevention, there would, you didn't have to meet these rules and ways of getting involved. And so, all the, they, all of my approaches is a very collaborative style, and so having as many voices involved in the, in the decision, I think, makes it the best decision. Within Seattle, I'm sorry, within Renton, when I worked here, we, we became the majority-minority community. We're, again, 51% people of color, and I think that we have just continued to do amazing things to try to bring more people into the mix. Does not mean that we are done. This is a journey. This is a personal journey for myself to learn and be better about things, and also as a city, to actually continue to try new things. There's a lot of efforts in this region that I think that Renton is involved in and will continue to be involved in, and I hope to be part of that as well.
Thank you. Councilmember Ojalar.
Hi, thank you for being here.
Thank you.
In your opinion, what roles, if any, do cities have regarding climate change?
Wow, a great, great question. So that is definitely one that everybody thinks about when we think about government and, and we have a very vocal governor. So I think there's a lot of things that we can do, and again, there's that whole personal versus systematic things we can do around climate change. Regarding cities, you know, there are definitely things that we, policies and procedures we have around sustainability that should be in place, and continuing to, as we make decisions on investments and operations, making sure that we make, are making the best decisions. Regarding more of a policy advocacy role, I think, really, I think we need to listen to our voters and see, you know, if that's an issue that people have talked about. I think a lot of times, governments kind of need to lead, lead the way in order to make things happen, and so I wouldn't want our city council to be too far ahead of our residents. But I think it's a conversation that I would have more broadly and better understand where our community stands on that. I personally think that, again, that governments being involved and kind of leading the way to kind of make some changes are, is an important role of government, but I would respect what our larger community would want to. And, you know, one of the clashes that could happen with talking about climate change is, you know, business impacts and that. And so being that I have a strong background in economic development, I would definitely want to better understand the business aspect of that and find, find out if there's, if there's true concerns versus perceived concerns, and making sure that we do, don't make decisions that negatively impact our economy.
Thank you. Councilmember McCarver.
Yes, thank you. As Renton grows economically, it grows more and more out of reach for many working-class families. How would you work to keep Renton an affordable place for everyone?
Love this question. Thank you. Because this is a question that, for a lot of us have moved to Renton because it's more affordable for other places, or it was a community that we saw that was growing and wanted to be part of that. So affordability and affordable housing is a very complex issue. And I think there are, we're very lucky to have the Renton Housing Authority as our partner that is focused just on Renton versus multiple jurisdictions. So I think there are multiple things we can do. So I know that we do have the multifamily tax exemption credit program that allows tax exemption for developers to provide affordable housing. We need to find more solutions in the private-public partnership. But I also think that building new is expensive, and so therefore rents are going to be expensive. So looking at rehabbing and maintaining viable housing to keep in the housing stock is also an important role of that. When you talk about affordability for working-class families, there's also businesses that are challenged by that when there's new construction and their rents go up. So there's affordability across the scale. The other, the, one of the things I really appreciate that I've seen the council and the city becoming more involved in, more regional representation is getting involved in, in regional efforts around affordability, because this is not a Renton issue. This is not one city issue. So what kind of things and best practices from other cities can we bring in? And what resources can we access? Because one of the, I think our benefits is having a lot of what was more affordable housing in the past is becoming more expensive, but we, we definitely can build upon the strength of our working class and other community members who are joining us. I think we need to think across the broad spectrum. There's the missing middle. Again, this, you know, the affordable housing issue is something that's near and dear to my heart, and I'm actually currently working on a project in Issaquah for a transit-oriented development that is working with King County Housing Authority and another developer to provide the first affordable housing in our urban core. So learned a lot, and again, it could be like a half an hour conversation, but I think Renton has definitely been ahead of the curve about some of these issues, but we also, I think, continue, need to continue to focus on getting Sunset developed and looking at opportunities when they come up to, to continue to either rehab or encourage private development to include affordable housing.
Thank you. Councilmember Prince.
Thank you, Madam President. Good afternoon, Jennifer.
Thank you.
If you were running for election to this seat right now, what would you tell the voters as you were doorbelling the most important issue for you to work on and why?
Wow. So I don't know if I can just say one. As I said, wow. So one of the things I guess I first want to say is, I recognize how all of you have been doorbelling to get to where you are, and I recognize the, the challenges and the interesting part of that. And so I, if I was selected, I would actually monthly go out and do some doorbelling to better understand the voters beyond the people I've talked to about this issue. But if I was going door-to-door, I would, I would talk about several things, but talking about, I think that, the thing that kind of gets me right now, that I'm most worried about, is the impact that Boeing plant has on potentially a temporary closure on our local businesses. And so I would encourage people to shop local, to, when next time you're going to go out for dinner, make sure you consider going to Renton businesses. But I'm hoping that's a very temporary and short-lived thing. I think that would be the kind of more immediate concern. I think another thing that I, I'm going to go more than one, because that's a temporary, that's a temporary one. But, but another one would be the importance for people to be counted in the census and to make sure that, that they understand the, the benefits and the reasons why it's important to be counted. So I know that a lot of people have fear of government and worried about, especially with our current climate, and worried about immigration issues. But the, the importance of knowing how many people we have here and, as you know, benef, ends up impacting our ability to get grants and other things. So I think, so those two things would be more of what they can do to actually help our, our community in our efforts. I think transportation is going to be one thing you'd hear, and we talk about how, thank you, Councilmember Prince, for stepping up to serve the Sound Transit Board. That's one thing that I think we need to be very coordinated on and collaborative, which I have noticed that Renton is on the ball with working with Metro and Sound Transit and Wash Dot for all the projects that are happening. And so I think that's, to really hit home to where people are thinking is, I think, the transportation issue.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Corman.
Yes, good afternoon. So housing is obviously of great concern across the region. How would you provide increasing housing options while balancing this work with preservation of existing neighborhoods?
Oh, great question. Yeah, and so I think a lot of people do think, let's, let's build more housing where it currently is. Again, as I mentioned before, new construction costs more, so having the ability to preserve in place some apartments or some other single-family homes, I think, is important. So I think when you look at the, the different options for construction, for what people want in housing, I think we need to, to allow for a broader breadth of what's available. So I know that there's discussions around ADUs, accessory dwelling units, and, and, you know, trying to encourage different sizes of units. I know people don't like micro-units and such, but there are some people who, who do like that. So looking at the, the types of construction, so the module stuff that some Renton Housing Authority has done, and the, the importance, though, of maintaining our, our stock, our housing stock that currently exists, helps actually keep the, the community identity as well, right? And so we don't want to look like every other city, and our city is very, you know, is ours, very unique for our city as the different time periods that houses have been built. So I think you would want to make sure that if there are ways to encourage people to actually be able to stay in their homes, so whether that's at home repair, whether that's providing some, again, some rules around how they may be able to expand, expand to add an ADU, to help them pay for the rising property taxes, other things they have. So trying to figure out why people may be selling off, because a lot of times it's not just because they want to make, you know, money and go off and live on a, on a beach. It's, they feel the pressures and stress of the financials. And so if there are ways you can address that, to allow them to stay, that, that would help to make sure we maintain a better mix in the community.
Thank you very much. This is Sid, and thank you very much again for being here.
Thank you.
Our next candidate is Angelina Benedetti.
Oh, I'm good. Thank you very much. Um, here? Yes. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Good evening. Thank you for being here. Each councilmember will ask you one question, and you have up to five minutes to respond to each question.
Is there a little, is the?
Yes.
Okay, perfect.
The timer is on. So I will be asking you the first question, and why do you want to be a councilmember?
I want to be a councilmember because I believe that it is one of the highest and best ways to serve your community. It's an opportunity to commit, to listening to the people who are part of the city, to try and seek opinions from every part of the city. It's a big job. I've had a lot of different opportunities to serve the city of Renton on boards and on commissions, including the last three years, up until just recently the Chair of the Planning Commission. So I know how much work it takes, how many meetings, and how many, how much attention you need to pay to all of the, all of the folks that are here in the committee. The timer is on, so I will be asking you the first question, and why do you want to be a council member?
I want to be a council member because I believe that it is one of the highest and best ways to serve your community. It's an opportunity to commit, to listening to the people who are part of the city, to try and seek opinions from every part of the city. It's a big job. I've had a lot of different opportunities to serve the City of Renton on boards and on commissions, including the last three years, up until just recently, the Chair of the Planning Commission. So I know how much work it takes, how many meetings, and how many, how much attention you need to pay to all of the, all of the folks that are here in the committee, excuse me, in the community, and how much attention you have to pay to each and every issue, how much research it takes, how much time it takes to really understand issues so you can, to bring your best self to it. So I know how much it takes, and I am, I'm still very interested and really want to serve in this capacity. I love this community. I'm the fourth generation in my family to live in it. If, if, if all goes well, I'll be buried 20 feet from my great-grandparents up there on Mont Olivet, and I intend to commit to this community however I can in the highest and best way, and if this is an opportunity to serve to do that, that's what I want to do.
Thank you. Councilmember Bynum.
Yes, Ms. Benedetti?
Yes.
Is that how you pronounce your last name?
Yes, Benedetti.
Benedetti. How would you define inclusion and equity, and how would you specifically address issues of inequities in our city?
Yes, thank you, those are great questions. So thinking about inclusion, I believe that inclusion is giving everybody an opportunity to have a voice and to participate in a process, and to widely seek ways for folks to, to do that and to actively try and seek those voices. That, I think, is inclusion. And then equity is giving people who might otherwise be marginalized an opportunity really to speak out, to really seek those opinions out, and to give the help that is necessary to bring people up to a level playing field, right? It's not about giving everybody the same shot, it's about giving people the right shot to be able to do whatever it is that they want to do, to bring them whatever, whatever it is that their goal is, whatever it is that, that we're trying to, especially in a city context, when we're looking at equity, what we really need to do is look and see who it is that we need to reach out to and what extra things we need to do to bring them there.
Thank you.
I just, there was one other quick part of the question, which was, how is it that we would do that in a, in the community? And I think that one of the ways that we need to reach out is to give people a voice on boards and commissions, and as council members to actively seek voices from all parts of the community.
Thank you. Councilmember Hallar.
Thank you for being here.
Hi, thank you.
In your opinion, what roles, if any, do cities have regarding climate change?
So, what did they say, all politics starts local, right? We as cities have an opportunity to make choices that impact the larger region, and in order to do that, we really can have a voice, for example, by putting together our bike and trail master plan, or trail and bike master plan, to really try and find a way to get more cars off of the road. We can make choices around zoning that will support transit-oriented development so that we have fewer car trips, so that we have people able to live and work and walk and shop and play in the same places, right? So those are the kinds of decisions that we can make at a local level that support the regional ability to, you know, reduce, for example, car trips in terms of vehicles, right? Then we also have ordinances that we can place. I know that something that has been, you know, happening in a lot of different communities is to look at how plastics and consumables are used, and those are kinds of decisions that can be made at the local level.
Thank you. Councilmember McKeery.
Yes, thank you. My question is, as Renton grows economically, it grows more and more out of reach for many working-class families. How would you work to keep Renton an affordable place for everyone?
That's a really important question. So one of the things, if you, if you read my materials, one of the things that I am most committed to is affordable housing. And I think one of the ways that we can do that is by incentivizing those folks who wish to build it, to look at how it is that we do those multifamily tax incentives, and at what level we do that for affordable housing. We take a look at zoning, we take a look at all things which make housing affordable, and that's when we start looking at those transit-oriented districts, right? Because then somebody doesn't just, they might not need, for example, to own a car in order to be able to work someplace. So when we're looking at, I think about a lot of the work that we have been doing on the Planning Commission. I've been on the Planning Commission now since 2015, and a lot of the work that we have been doing has been to try and find opportunities for that affordable housing to happen, and to make sure that it is in the right places so that people can live, work, and play all in the same spot.
Thank you. Councilmember Prince.
Yes, thank you. Good afternoon. If you were running for election to this seat right now, what would you tell to, tell the voters when you were doorbelling the most important issue for you to work on is and why?
Okay. So I think that the three issues that I spoke to in my application were equity and inclusion, and the need to make sure that we had a wide variety of voices represented in the city, that we reach out to all of the people in this community, and that we listen to what it is that they have to say about how it is that we can make Renton a great place to live. I also believe that affordable housing is a critical piece because we need to be able to have people live in the city to, and not just, in so many cities, people are being priced out of the market, and we want people to be able, generations of families to be able to live in Renton, and the way to do that is to make sure that the housing is affordable and accessible, okay? And then I would also say that one of the things that's most important is to really plan for the growth that we know is coming, to really think about where it is that we're going to be putting in our, sort of, our centers of the community and supporting those. I think about what it is that we can do to really make a vibrant downtown, and what it is that we can do to redevelop Sunset in a way that really makes sense and makes it a great place to be. So to think about those, the equity and inclusion, affordable housing, and then, you know, finally really looking at how it is that we're going to grow and continue to be such a great place to live.
Thank you. Councilmember Corman.
Good afternoon.
Hi.
As, as actually you've already mentioned, housing is obviously of great concern across the region. How would you provide increasing housing options while balancing this work with preservation of existing neighborhoods?
That has been the work of the Planning Commission, I think. And so you really have to first start with a plan, right? Where is it that you believe you're going to be able to absorb that growth? Where is it that you're going to be able to plan for it? Where is it that you're going to incentivize it? And the way that you do that is with those multifamily tax incentives, to focus it in particular areas and to make sure that percentages of it are affordable, right? And then you take a look at where it does and doesn't make sense to grow bigger. So I think one of the examples that I most like to share is to, is how, at one point, the city rezoned the South Renton neighborhood, and then realized later, when the community came back and said, you know, we need to preserve this neighborhood's walkable character, we need to relook at that. And so it was one of those things where, yes, there was a plan, and we also needed to really listen to what people were saying about the character of their community and what it is that they wanted, right? And then I think you take a look at how growth can make sense and incentivize that, and also remove barriers to things like accessory dwelling units, so that you can have affordable options for people who might want to either rent on somebody else's property or families, generations of them living together. So, you know, those accessory dwelling units can still stay within and keep the character of a neighborhood, and we, as a city, can make choices about how it is that we're going to remove barriers to the people who want to build them. So I would say that those are some really great options for how it is that we can grow and do it in a smart way, and do it in a way that keeps the characters of our really fantastic neighborhoods.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. This is it. Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
And thank you for participating. All right. Our next candidate is Maria Teresa Vazquez. And I think Julia is already there. If you can sit here, please. Right here in this table. Hi, hi.
Hi.
Thank you for being here. Each council member will ask you one question, and you have up to five minutes to respond each question. I will be the first one. Why do you want to be a council member?
When I moved here with my husband 20 years ago, we fell in love with Renton. Renton has a very rich soil, like the community, the parks, the city programs, so it was easy to grow roots here. I have been always involved in the community, and I think I'm ready to take the next step and work with, for the community in bigger steps. So I want to do it not just for my sons, but also for the kids that I work with every day, to give them an example. I witness that when you work with the community, it's amazing the outcomes that you see. When I started up a Spanish program in a preschool, I planted a seed in the kids to explore different languages. When I work in the food bank, every week I know that one hour and a half of two hours make a big difference in a family. And when I participate in Girls on the Run, that is a nationwide program where, who, which develop their self-respect for the girls, I know that walking or running, supporting and connecting with them is going to be something that they appreciate and remember. So that's why I want to be a council member, to continue planting seeds, to be for the families, and to connect and support the community.
Thank you. Councilmember Bynum.
Yes. Ms. Vazquez, how would you define inclusion and equity, and how do you specifically would address issues of inequities in our city?
Well, as you see, Renton has been changing. We have a lot of different diversity, and I'm happy to see it in the council members. So I will advocate for the inclusion, because sometimes the minorities are the ones that are struggling with housing, or high school graduation rates, or income, and we need to be there for them. At my, I work at Highlands Elementary, I'm a part educator for the English language learner, and 40% of our students are minorities, different languages. And we need to be there every day to support them with language and resources. So I will do the same with the city. We have been trying and giving them English classes, we have connected with the police, we, we want them to push to be part of the community.
Thank you. Councilmember Hallar.
Thank you for being here. In your opinion, what roles, if any, do cities have regarding climate change?
Well, we have a, a big responsibility in climate change. We need to pay close attention to that because we are destroying our mother nature. Every time I drive from my house to school and it's a garbage day in some neighborhood, oh my God, I want to park my car, get out, and start sorting the garbage. It's, it's a big problem. Also, we need to keep our green areas in order to, to continue with clean air and clean water. And also, I will advocate for banning the plastic bag in the City of Renton.
Thank you. Councilmember McKeery.
Thank you. My question is, as Renton grows economically, it grows more and more out of reach for many working-class families. How would you work to keep Renton an affordable place for everyone?
Yeah. Regardless of the income, I think all people deserve to have a house, and sometimes people struggle with this, even though Renton has like 30, 30 low-income communities, some, some families still struggle, struggling with this. They are forced to leave the neighborhood they love, or to move in with some extended families. So I, I can, sometimes this affected the academic, to the kids, and they suffer for stress. So I will advocate for any project that the city already has in place, and also I will give some ideas, because I saw this problem very often with the families that I work with at the school.
Thank you. Councilmember Prince.
Thank you. Good afternoon. If you were running for election to this seat right now, what would you tell the voters the most important issue is for you when you're out doorbelling to work on and why?
Okay, I think one will be transportation. The city is, have a big project coming with the new Renton Transit Center, and I'm so happy that you are asking this question, because now you are in the Sound Transit Board, so we are well-represented. But I think the community will benefit from more stops for the buses, and also more frequent. Right, my son and my husband, they ride bus 111, and just a few months, they are 20 minutes late, stop, a stop, and my son was so excited, oh, I have 20 more minutes in the morning, so this is a problem. And also, the parking, park and ride lots close to the neighborhoods. I think that will benefit the city. And also, we have the light rail coming to Renton, so I think it's good that we can, we will have the opportunity to learn from our neighboring cities, the pros and the cons, and we, so it's going to be successful for Renton. That's one. The second one is going to be public safety. Keep schools, open spaces, and the community free from gun violence. So we need to give the police all the tools they, they need, and the personnel to keep us safe.
Thank you. Councilmember Corman.
Yes, good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
So housing is obviously of great concern across the region. How would you provide increased housing options while balancing this work with preservation of existing neighborhoods?
When you say regional, yes, there's a problem, and I, I see this problem every day. The other day, mom came to our school, and she was homeless. She has a, three years old and a first grader, and all her belongings on a plastic bag. So it's, it's outstanding that we have this regionally, because I start, it's not my job, but I call- So it's outstanding that we have this regionally, because I start, it's not my job, but I called my family liaison. She gave me the phone for Mary's Place Shelter. Then I called Centrarendoo, that is another regional nonprofit organization. They offered to help her with some advice. We also called 211 to file a report, and they gave her like a list of food banks. And also, we called the police because she needs to file a report about domestic violence. So I think she was in need, and I was the only person that can help her at that time. So I was there for her, but I witness that the region is doing a great job and a great effort, putting all these things available for people that are in need. So I will support any regional projects that the city of Renton has to make a positive impact in the community.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much for being here, and this is it. So we will probably make a decision today at 7 o'clock.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. And I keep saying "probably" because we can vote and vote and vote again. That's what I want to say, yes, we will. Our last candidate is Wisley Burquist. Am I pronouncing it incorrectly? Wisley? Wisley?
Yes.
Good evening.
Hello.
You can take a seat.
Thank you, council.
Thank you for being here. Each council member will ask you a question, and you have up to five minutes to respond each question.
Perfect.
I will be the first one. And why do you want to be a council member?
So let's start off with, it's one of those things that you get involved with more and more as you get a little bit older. And being from Renton for a long time, obviously born and raised, I get very involved with a lot of nonprofits, and work with them intensely on trying to build their, building their dreams, and work with a lot of different communities. And each one of these nonprofits I've worked with through my career, it's really interesting how much we dive into working with their city council, working with a lot of other individuals that are, you know, active in the community. And it's amazing the amount of pull and energy that the council can actually create to really draw in and expedite or push a vision. And so when I see this at other cities that are going on, I haven't had the opportunity to build one in Renton, which is too bad, but one day it will happen, I've really enjoyed that. And obviously, my kids are fifth-generation Rentonites, and going to school here soon enough, they're four and one, so, you know, we're almost there. But being able to make a difference, and I do feel very strong about a lot of things that Renton's already doing quite well, and things that I would like to help push forward with the council. And so these are kind of my main reasons, and that probably runs in the family a little bit, too.
Thank you. Councilmember V.
Mr. Burquist.
Yes.
How would you define inclusion and equity? And how would you specifically address issues of inequities in our city?
So this is great, and racial equity is huge inclusion. So there's many different ways to tackle this, and one of my favorite, because I'm not going to be the best at it, and I know that upfront, but I will do my best to help the person that's carrying that torch, to really drive forward what they think and their missions are, to really adapt and pull together the group to make it happen. Because no one can do it on their own, and we run into this all the time in the built environment, where you want to be very, very fair with racial equity, and there's no easy way to do it. So it's the constant reminder of always bringing it up in topics, always making it the forefront of every challenge and issue and opportunity that we have, and bringing people together is the main key. So the institutional challenges that we'll all confront with these issues that you bring up, will something that we need to cross together. But there's definitely more opportunity, and that's definitely one of the huge, I think, flags that we can raise about Renton and our diversity that we have, and how much we do focus on it.
Thank you. Councilmember Hallar.
Hi, thank you for being here.
Thank you.
In your opinion, what roles, if any, do cities have regarding climate change?
A tremendous role. So I think the role that cities really play is to create that vision for people to come together, right? And right now, we're seeing a huge wave of momentum on the private side, and on the county side, and on cities and jurisdictions across the board. So you want to make sure you're catching that wave at the right time, and we definitely are. So there's huge opportunity for the city to get involved. I think we definitely would shoot at something like a 2040 plan of some sort, right? And you have to create those more lofty goals. But at the same time, we need to collaborate with the other local cities together and create a bigger voice together. Like currently, right now, I have the King County 2035 Plan on my desk, and I'm helping them review. And it's a neat document, but they need support to build that and push that forward. So a city on its own can make an impact, and definitely should take those steps forward to be a leader in this. But at the end of the day, we need to make sure we collaborate with other cities and other jurisdictions to really push forward sustainability. But it all starts here, and it can be done in the form of taxes, but that's obviously a very challenging topic. So we got to figure out a different path forward than just a carbon tax, per se. But there's a lot of baby steps we can take before we have to get to that, where we start to create the momentum here in Renton, which creates innovation, which creates excitement, which creates a lot of great opportunities.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you. Councilmember Kirby.
Yes, thank you. My question is, as Renton grows economically, it grows more and more out of reach for many working-class families. How would you work to keep Renton an affordable place for everyone?
So it's definitely challenging. So affordability, the biggest thing is shelter, obviously, and food. So those are the two biggest cost items that we all have. Transportation is definitely a luxury that we don't have to have in these situations. But, so the two that we can control is working more and more with food banks. It's youth and family services in the city of Renton is definitely, has a ton of opportunity to really expand. It's amazing that we don't have a larger footprint when it comes to especially food banks, and we are doing a lot of great things in Renton right now for low-income housing, which is really neat to see, especially up in the Sunset area. But there's so much more room for workplace housing, too, and we need to really work with, you know, the developers out there that do work on that, to catch the 9% tax credits at the start of every year, right? They only accept so many every year, and so we need to help them figure out when to hit those timelines and to really entice that to happen. And then beyond that, I mean, working to have good local jobs here so people don't have to travel a long way to work is a huge thing, too, right? The cost of travel. So everything we can do to maintain and expand economic opportunities in this area is also a great benefit for our residents.
Thank you. Councilmember Prince.
Yes. Good afternoon. Thanks for coming.
Thank you.
If you were running for election to this seat right now, you're outdoorbelling, what would you tell the voters the most important issue for you to work on and why?
So I think the most important opportunity that I would bring forward to them is my skill set of my democratic ways of leadership and my visioning, and working with the current council and the great opportunities that you guys have already brought to the table and have already talked a ton about. My whole goal would be really to pull that together and to push forward, because the visions that we already have up here at the council are really good. So taking the next step with all of them, and really starting to execute on them at a higher level would be my goal, and my main topic would be when I go to talk to residents, and obviously blending that into where they live and talk about it, and different neighborhoods or opportunities that they have, so.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Councilmember Corman.
Good afternoon.
Hello.
So housing is obviously of great concern across the region.
Yes.
How would you provide increasing housing options while balancing this work with preservation of existing neighborhoods?
Oh, wow. I think that has a lot to do with our zoning that we've created, right? And we really need to think about that, especially with downtown along the Cedar River Corridor. It worries me greatly that we're allowing bigger and bigger developments to build so close to the Cedar River, for example. So it really comes down to us working a lot more on that development strategy and where we're going to allow the five-over-two type construction of these behemoths that do provide a lot of low-income housing, which we do want. But at the same time, we really need to work with these people, these groups that come in that have a lot of interest, to balance that need, because we do need a lot more housing that's on the affordable side. And it's a tough balance, because you want to make sure, like, you want to get involved as a county or a city, and you want to push them towards sustainability, right? And maybe we come up with lead requirements that they have to have to build five-over-twos in that zone. So if we have them build that, you know, lead accreditation of silver or something like that, and we help them on the permitting side because they're going to hit the lead gold standard, that would be the most proactive and quick remedy to align. But then there's other things we could do that would take longer to formulate.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you.
This is it. Thank you very much. Good luck.
Appreciate it. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you. The council will recess for two hours and reconvene at 7 o'clock to begin the balloting process during the regular council meeting to appoint the candidate that will fill the council position number two. During the recess, the council will not engage in any discussions about the applicant's qualification. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you.